On behalf of the town of Silver City, I'm calling this meeting of the town council to order. I'd like to invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and following that, the salute to the New Mexico State Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
I would like to recognize some of our town administration here with us tonight. We have our manager, Alex Brown. We also have our new town attorney, Charles Kretic. And Mr. Brown, could you introduce him for us?
This is Charles Kretic. He works with the New Mexico governmental law.
Local municipal law.
Local municipal law out of Albuquerque, but he's actually, he lives in Deming, so he's going to be working with us out of Deming. He's got thirty-plus years of government law experience, and so I think we're in good hands. Would you like to say anything?
No.
Thank you. Welcome. Is Mrs. O'Leary here tonight? We have Police Chief Portillo with us, our Code Enforcement Officers, Vicky Tony and Thomas Hernandez. We also have our Fire Marshal, Eloy Voskus, with us tonight. We'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, including community members and also members of the press. Next item on the agenda is number two, changes to the agenda. Does anyone have changes to the agenda? No changes. Moving on to item three, ceremonies. And the town would like to recognize Patricia Pino as Employee of the Month. Mr. Brown, who's going to?
I guess Mrs. Pino isn't here today, but I'll go ahead and read the nomination. Do you have it? Oh, wait a second here.
Let's go up front if you want to.
She's not here.
She's not here, ma'am.
We don't have any more. She's not here.
She's not here.
Oh, she's not here.
So I'll just read it from here if that's okay. But excuse me, I don't have glasses.
Well, you can give it to her later, I guess.
Yeah, I'll give it to her later. Public Works Department would like to recommend Patricia Pino as the Employee of the Month in April. Patricia has been Reception Secretary for the Public Works Department for the last twenty-five years, and she will be retiring at the end of the year. She has been outstanding employee and exceptional skills and customer service skills, a team player and an asset to the department, never missed a day at work, and having pride in what she does on a daily basis, self-motivated and always keeping herself busy. She has been more than a secretary to the department, and she will be missed. I will echo that over and over because she has been an excellent member of that department, of the Public Works Department, and always very helpful, and not just to the public but to the employees and staff. So I just, I completely, wholeheartedly agree with this recommendation.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, oh, does any council member have anything they'd like to say relative to her? Next on the agenda is Proclamations, and there are none. Next is Council Comments. First on the list tonight is Counselor Snyder.
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Prince?
Your comments.
Counselor Kano?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of them. First of all, this past weekend was a good reminder that if someone, if a public member of the public wants to do something in our public park, especially golf park, a permit needs to be obtained by the person, and you can do that at the Public Works Department. This is really important because I think we have four different things going on in golf park at relatively the same time, and only one of them had a permit. So if you want to have a legitimate thing at golf park, an event, then you need to go through that permit process. It's really important, especially if you're going to have a lot of people because there's insurance involved and other things. So please get those before you have your event. And then the other thing I wanted to do was thank everyone who came out to our first community dinner at the Warming Center. Last Friday, we had about a hundred people who showed up, which was really good. The cooking was great by the staff, the volunteer staff of the Warming Center. A lot of the people who had been volunteering over the past three months showed up. I'd like to thank Spin for, instead of serving dinner at their place, deciding to do a field trip and come over. So we had about, I'd say about twenty, twenty-five people from Spin, which is great. I'm hoping if they continue to participate, they'll start talking to some of us and joining in and visiting and not just going to eat. If we're going to be a community, we need to see some involvement from them. Also, reminder to people who go to that, it is a potluck, so if you're able to bring something, we would appreciate that, especially now that we have a hundred people. And the next one is scheduled for next Friday, which I believe is the eighteenth, and it starts at five o'clock at the old Recreation Center on the Hill. So if anyone wants to join us, we would appreciate that. And I also wanted to thank Counselor Ben Como, who went and spent the evening with us and participated and has been quite a supporter of the Warming Center as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ben Como?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Last Friday, I attended the renaming of the State Police Office in Deming in honor of Derek Jarrett. It was well-attended. You have the State Police Chief who attended the meeting along with, I believe I saw Senator Ramos there, and our Lieutenant Governor. If you have a chance, check it out. It's a beautiful, the display that they put there in front of their office, it was really worth attending. They will be having a welcoming reception for the newly appointed Regents for Western New Mexico tomorrow. That begins from 5:30 to 6:30. It will be at 502 West College Avenue.
Next is item six, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on March 25, 2025. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Prince?
I move to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of March 25, 2025.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Counselor Ben Como?
All sorts.
There were motion and a second. Any discussion or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is Public Input. I've turned the microphone on by the podium, so when you do come up, please speak directly into the microphone so that everybody can hear you. First on our list tonight is Laura Shane.
At the last meeting, I invited you all downtown to experience what I do every day as a business owner. Sadly, only one of you came by to show your face, so I'm disappointed, to say the least. I have been told that our downtown is a gem, and we need to get a plan to keep it prosperous, which I agree. But sadly, I disagree with it being a gem and prosperous, but it could be. Stores are vacant. There's loitering on every block. They've cut, people have cut down their hours drastically, or don't open, or they close early, like I went to lunch today and then closed early. The continuance of the loitering and people allowing that to happen is suffocating our downtown, and I'd like that to change and new ordinances be put in place. So I do appreciate your talk, and I still invite all of y'all downtown. Fetch Pet Boutique is where I'm at, so come see me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I brought my timer. Thank you all so much for the opportunity to speak about something that is important to me, and I hope it's important to you. I'm talking about the quality of life and safety in the historic downtown.
Could you speak directly into?
I'm not speaking. Does that sound better?
Yes.
Okay. Let me get up close and friendly with it. I hope what I'm going to talk about is important to you. I'm talking about the quality of life and safety that has deteriorated significantly since Grateful Living opened in the three-hundred block of the historic downtown. I came here to teach art in 1988 at Western New Mexico University, and I live in the historic district. I've had many art shows there. In fact, Mayor Pro Tim Macano might recall that you helped me with handicapped access for Avellino Maestas' art show many years ago. I remember and appreciate that help. I continued to be open to the public until about a year ago, when the number of aggressive, frightening, and obviously drugged-out polysubstance users made it dangerous to even open my doors. This has had a major impact on my financial stability, and I know I'm not alone when I talk of the deteriorating quality of life and safety in the historic downtown. Only you have the power to make the historic downtown a place of safety, beauty, and joy for all the citizens of Grant County and the travelers who come to Silver City expecting it to be a welcoming place, but instead encounter polysubstance users either sleeping on the streets aggressively panhandling or threatening individuals and businesses. Only you. I closed my doors when a couple from elsewhere asked me, is it safe to go back to my car? I provided each of you a packet of information and questions. I know you will not answer questions while the meeting is going on. These are questions that Raul Torrieta and I are going to talk about on Friday on Local Flavor at nine o'clock in the morning. We are inviting Mayor Ken Ladner, Town Manager Alex Brown, Chief of Police Freddie Portillo, and perhaps others will have to share microphones to come in and be a part of that conversation. These questions have been suggested to us. I provided you a packet of different things that you probably already know all about it anyway. We are all concerned about Grateful Living's plan to dispense free cannabis and naloxone to poly-use substance abusers in the historic downtown. Personally, I think it is a very bad idea for many reasons. Please note the press release that appeared in the Thursday, April 3rd edition of the Silver City Daily Press entitled, "New Mexico Recovery Coalition Partners With Grateful Living to Launch the State's First Naloxone Box," vending box. Also, my comment is seen in the questions on number eleven. I think it's oxymoronic to say we're coming to the place where the problem exists because they're giving out free cannabis and Narcan is why people go there, polysubstance users. I would like to invite Mayor Ladner and Town Manager Alex Brown, and Police Chief Freddie Portillo, and others who have an interest to join Raul and me this Friday, April the eleventh, at nine in the morning, to discuss how we can work together to rediscover the healthy magic that used to be found in the historic downtown. Giving away free cannabis and Narcan to marginalized and unhoused individuals is not the way to go. Thank you for your time and attention. I hope to see all who have an interest and are concerned this Friday at nine o'clock at Hila Members Community Radio. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Chris Orzade.
I have that.
Chada Orzade.
No, we were just signing in.
And I can't read this very well, but the first name is, I think, Michael?
I was just signing in.
Laurie?
She's just signing in, too. She's just signing in, too.
Bruce Ashburn?
Just signed in.
I think you all thought this was a sign-up sheet rather than a sheet to sign up for public input. We'll try to make that a little more clearer next time. Next is Reports. First, we have Mr. Bobby Shaw, who will be representing Spin.
Council members?
City officials, Representative Trotzus and Senator Ramos. This will be my second report for Spin, so I'll be reporting on some figures out of the month of March. First of all, I'd like to thank the Warming Center for the barbecue that we had. It was wonderful. We had about eight staff show up and approximately a couple dozen clients show up, and everybody loved it. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working hand-in-hand with the Warming Center. So we appreciate it. Thank you. All right. So in the month of March in 2025, Spin served just over fifteen hundred meals. The actual number was fifteen hundred and sixty-three. Correction is needed from last month's report. When I reported out that Spin serves three meals a day, that was my mistake. They actually serve lunch and dinner. They start cooking early in the morning, and that's where my confusion was. So I just wanted to put that out there for a correction. Meals are served seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, except for this last Friday where everybody went over to the Warming Center. Meals are served at twelve noon and six p.m. Spin does have clients utilizing Cory Camino to provide a ride over to the Gospel Mission for breakfast, and that occurs Monday through Friday, five days a week. The emergency shelter for the month of March facilitated one thousand one hundred and ninety-five occupants in the evening. This is approximately thirty-nine people per night. The number of showers for the month was five hundred and two. Records indicate Spin staff requested an ambulance three times in March for medical issues. The population being served at the shelter statistically experiences more barriers accessing care. The process to get someone into skilled nursing facilities and/or assisted living is difficult to navigate and can be expensive. Police response was requested three times. Staff members, and this needs to be said, staff members attempted to de-escalate in each instance. De-escalation training has been provided for staff. Refresher training is, will be on the schedule soon. Should be noted that calling police is always an option. However, police are contacted after the other measures have failed. The Spin team assists the community with seven hundred separate encounters. As a reminder, an encounter is providing services such as case management, representative payee, day hab, some of the other things I went over last month. For April, CPR training is scheduled. Spin projects to have each shelter employee certified by the end of April. That is the actual end of my report, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Counselor Kano?
I just have a comment. If you're going to continue to come to reports, if you would just not come and just read this, because we're all capable of reading it in our packet, so it's kind of redundant for you to do that. So if you have extra things you want to tell us, that's great, but it's not necessary for you to come and read this to us because we're all capable. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Ben Como?
What type of medical calls were required?
I'd rather not go into the specifics of that. So for HIPAA reasons, there was various reasons that they were called. Some, I'll just leave it at medical issues.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Shaw.
Sorry, I will clarify that. It was not overdoses or anything like that. They were legitimate medical issues for care.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next will be New Mexico Senator Gabriel Ramos.
Good afternoon to all of you, and thank you for having me, and appreciate you putting me on the agenda. I want to give a special thank you to Alex Brown because, you know, when I was up in session in Santa Fe, I was able to call him probably four or five times on important bills, and he was always there to talk with us and guide us through, and guide us through the needs of the municipality. You know, I was really fortunate this year to have served on the Tax and Education Committee. On the Tax Committee, I think it was really nice because I had Luis Terrazas serving on the House side, and I was serving on the Senate side. And when it came to our tax bills that were coming through, it was nice because he'd either vet them first, or I would, because if they start off in the Senate, of course, they end up in the House and vice versa. So we're able to talk and try and cut taxes for everyone. And we had a huge tax bill. You know, it was going to be one hundred and seventy-five million dollars that we really thought should not be paid by tax dollars, but we fought hard to make sure that those monies came in from either our general budget or other areas to fulfill these needs for the state of New Mexico. You know, we also had, you know, quite a few other bills. Of course, we had over twelve hundred bills, and unfortunately, you know, only so many make it through. We were able to kill one of the gun bills that was coming through that was going to make semi-automatics illegal, but it wasn't only semi-automatics. It was also paint guns and other things that would have met the criteria that was in that bill. So it was a real sad bill that I thought, and most of the attorneys that were serving, that was unconstitutional. We really fought hard and got that killed. We had Senate Bill 247, which ensures that students' assessment results are not only collected, because not only collected, but actually given to the superintendents and policymakers in a timely fashion so that they can make decisions on how they're going to teach these children in the future or the near future. So, you know, that was a really big bill for us. Also sponsored Senate Bill 220, which strengthens transparency and accountability in our government, ensuring it operates openly. And what that means is that any time there's a lawsuit or some kind of suit against the city or against the state, that it gets reported in a portal, and everyone gets to see what the amount that was actually paid on that lawsuit. Because a lot of these suits in Albuquerque, when there's children that are getting hurt or raped or something to that effect, then the city sued, none of these amounts of monies are actually publicized anywhere. So everyone's wondering, well, what happened here? And how much money did they get paid out? And that kind of information that'll be in that portal. We also had Senate Bill 81, which aimed to ensure every New Mexican has access to fair property insurance. And the reason we put that bill in is because we have a lot of people here in Grant County that can't get insurance because they live in the mountains. And if they can't get insurance, then they lose, then they're in bad faith with the banks and bad faith with the lenders because they need that insurance to abide by the bank's rules. So we had Senate Bill 81, but it failed. But because of that bill, we had the Insurance Superintendent actually pass rule to make sure that we upped the coverages for those areas and will allow us to go ahead and provide insurance to people that otherwise could not get it. So we thought that was a very important bill throughout the whole state of New Mexico because people, not only here in Grant County, but in Lincoln County where they had the wildfires and up north, they could not get insurance for those purposes. We also passed Senate Bill 19. I co-sponsored that with Senator Steinborn. Senate Bill 19 was, I thought, was a great bill. It requires boards of regents to take ten hours of courses when it comes to ethics, when it comes to budgets, and when it comes to rules of order. Like you all use, I believe you use Robert's Rules of Order. They have to take a class in these areas. So I was really excited to get that passed, being that we're going through a little bit of turmoil here in our region. It was real nice to be able to coordinate with the other senator, which is Crystal Bradley. She couldn't make it today. She really wanted to be here. She sends her regards. I worked with Luis Terrazas, Rebecca Dow, Representative Jones, and we're able to come up with funding. And what we did this year is we started looking at areas that were going to be regionalized. For instance, everyone uses our sale here when it comes to our dump here in Silver City, and solid waste is really important to everyone. We've got to get rid of our waste, right? So, you know, we came together and got seven hundred thousand dollars for that project. We also came together and got nine hundred thousand dollars for the Silver City Annex. We also came together for the Silver City Golf Park construction, which is two hundred thousand dollars. And again, and I misspoke, it's southwest landfill sale construction is, we came up with six hundred, not seven hundred thousand. So I didn't mean to make you that excited there, Mayor, but it was six hundred thousand dollars, and hopefully that's enough to help out. We didn't get any growth funds this year, so it was really disappointing to a lot of us because that's where we get to help for everyday operations when it comes to different entities and different nonprofits. So we really hope that next year we'll be able to come up with our growth funds again to help out. I believe the previous senator and the previous, and our current representative, were told last time that growth funds were for two years, not just one. Otherwise, they could have divided it within, you know, within these groups and prepare them and say, hey, it's a two-year deal here. But we're hoping that next year we get growth funds and we're able to help the public the best we can. And, you know, again, it was a great experience. It was great to be back. You know, when I first got there, I was kind of hesitant. You know, I was wondering to see how I was going to get treated because I was on the other side before. But when you get to the state capital, it's urban versus rural. It's not really Republican versus Democrat. You know, whether you're Republican or Democrat, if you're from the rural areas, and we stick together, we have to fight to take care of our rural areas, and if you're from the urban areas, they usually stick together also, whether you're Republican or Democrat. So right off the bat, I was able to work with Democrat leader, Senator Peter Worth, and helped him with the insurance bills, and also helped him with some election bills. So it was good to be out, be back in Santa Fe, and, you know, I just want to thank the citizens of Grant County for sending me back, and I'm always here to help you. Thank you, Counselor Kano, for coming up, and you came up a few times, and I appreciate your comments and your leadership. And I got to meet with a few of you all when you went up there, and I appreciate you all coming, too. But, you know, it's always great to hear from our people back home, you know, because, you know, when you're up there, you're really concentrating on certain bills that are coming through your committees, and it's nice to be reminded of what's really important to the municipality when you speak to a counselor or a county commissioner, and what's important to the county. Usually, we talk about things beforehand, but there's bills that are going through, and what we hear from you all, sometimes it changes our mind. And sometimes, you know, we're right on the money on how we're thinking to represent this area. But it sure does help to hear from you all when we're up in Santa Fe. And, Mr. Mayor, I think my time is probably up, and I thank you very much again for letting me come up and speak in front of you. My number is 575-313-2077 if anyone of the public ever wants to get ahold of me. I'm hiring my assistant. My assistant starts on April 13th, and he's ready to hit the ground running, and it is, most of you know him. His name is Brett Caston. And I'm really looking forward to working with him. He was the county chair when I was the the vice chair for eight years and we make a great team and I'm glad to have him on my team. Thank you very much and God bless you.
Thank you, Senator Ramos. Does any councillor have a question or comment? Thank you again. We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Next is New Mexico Representative Luis Terrazas.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for having us here. Thank you, Alex and Chiefs and staff. You know, I think it was it was a great session. Every session's a little bit different. You know, everyone, every one of those has a different personality, it seems like, and they kind of morphed whatever's the new the people that get elected and so forth and it kind of changes. So but I think the Senator said it well that it's nice to be able to work together. So Senator Ramos and I and Senator Bradley, all of us that pretty much cover Grant County are working well, very well together and working to bring our resources together. And then we have, you know, then we work also with, like you said, Representative Jones, Armstrong, Dow, and it helps us a lot. It helps us a lot to kind of keep that consistency. I do want to thank, you know, some of the councillors and Alex. Alex always answers the phone for us and we appreciate that very much. And I kind of call it weird times because I work a lot. So I stay up late and but he'll he'll call, he'll answer my phone calls and he answers questions when we have them. But I think also the Senator said, it's so important for us to hear from you, very important to hear from you because, again, there was 1,200 bills, about 600 at each on the House and Senate, they're crossing, we're busy with our with our own bills, plus we've got, we're dealing with bills under committee and so forth. But when when you see something or that any of you see something that is going to affect you, whether it's something in law enforcement or fire or something for the cities or county, whatever, it is so helpful for you to call us and say, this is important to us or this is going to affect our budget or whatever. I also serve on tax in the House, as the Senator said, and I serve on the Labor and Veterans Committee. My my district aide is here, legislative aide Bruce Ashburn. You called him up. I thought you was going to take this over and I didn't have to do this, Mr. Mayor. But Bruce is helping us. We've got our office here and you'll be able to help us. So for as far as briefing this, I'm going to tell you, I think the biggest thing that I see in Grant County, because the whole county is in my district, and as we knock doors, the number one thing that I'm hearing from everybody is their cost of living. The cost of living is the number one issue that they have. Public safety is up there, education's there, and of course, infrastructure, always your streets and water infrastructure, drainage and so forth is important. But, you know, the cost of living for people that are in fixed incomes, I think, is very, very important. And as what we've experienced in the last few years is it's just continuously going up. And and for those people who are on fixed incomes, you know, that really affects them. They're on Social Security, that's all they have. They're not going to get a raise to keep up with the rate of inflation and that's a big that's a big deal. So, you know, we sit there and I'm going to tell you a couple of things, you know. First of all, when it comes to that, it seems that we're just constantly having, as a person that understands economics as an accountant and so forth and businessperson, I understand a lot of things in banking and and those type of financial things. And I see some of the legislations going through the through the through the House especially and some and as we get bills from the Senate. And I can't tell you how many bills we sit there and and are working defense to explain how this affects our cost of living and how it affects, you know, just the regular people and how it trickles if you do impose taxes on a particular entity, whether it's oil and gas or it's something on you guys to run your the city or the county, like paid family medical leave, how those taxes affect their ability to meet your budgets and so forth and how it turns around and costs more to those people who are on the other end as customers and how that affects them. It's important for us to understand that. But, you know, and so we're working with that to try and keep balance of of these type of bills affecting people. We're out of balance in the legislature. And being when we're out of balance, and I mean this wholeheartedly, I would love to see us come to a closer balance where it's more of a Republican and Democrat House and Senate, where we could actually have conversations because we're outnumbered two to one almost. And so we're like the flat, we're like the the emergency blinkers there saying, hey, this is going to affect our district. This is going to affect the people that work that at home. And we're not, the other side has the car, they've got the engine, they've got to control the wheel. I mean, they've got the whole, they're in control of the whole thing. But that being said, you know, I had concerns because we, you know, although we had a $3 billion surplus, you know, we were at the last trying to figure out how we were going to cut taxes for people and how to get it out of the out of the out of our savings, basically, right? And so things like that bother me because I really want to see us come together and really listen to each other and not just be allowed to, you know, pass the bills that we're allowed to pass rather than just us working together and finding solutions, if that makes any sense. I'm going to cover a couple of the of the legislative priorities that we worked on, that I worked on, being on the Veterans Committee. We were able to help, and I don't know if you saw it on the news, we passed property tax exemptions for veterans. I was able to be a big part of that, sponsor of that. And we also gave passes for veterans and some camping passes that they're going to get for free. We also, I'll come here so I can stay on target. I'm going to be here all night. The other thing we addressed was healthcare. And I believe that I can't remember if the Senator talked about what we did with Gila Regional. We worked on a CT scanner, got $700,000 for the CT scanner. But I also got worked on a bill to try and get Medicare reimbursement rates increased for our rural healthcare providers to address fire prevention. We worked on several bills to address that. I worked on, and these are all the things that are sponsored, on education. I had a bill to address absenteeism, something that the local superintendents are really, really wanting us to work work with. And even though some of these things don't pass, believe it or not, like the Senator said, just because they don't pass doesn't mean it doesn't bring attention and bring a response and it's done in another way or it brings at least the conversation to the table. When it came to higher education, I also worked on something to address responsible spending for all all universities throughout the state. And then we also, so I think I'm going to get into the other stuff, but I'll keep you here. I got I had like 50 bills that I worked on. But in addition to that, you know, the capital outlay, I think our Senator did a good job in saying how we all work together and pool our money to get our capital outlay together to fund these important things for the city, the county, and every single municipality in our in our in our county here. And it's nice to know that we're able to do that and work together and and be successful in that. I wanted to tell you that we did get, again, like you said, growth funds. I can tell you, I can assure you 100%, they never stated to us that it was a two-year money for two years. Because I I'm pretty aggressively understand this type of stuff. It was never stated. None of the representatives knew that. But what I will tell you is hopefully we can get growth funds in the next session. The growth funds that we have are is a different checkbook than our capital outlay. Capital outlay is for bricks and mortar, vehicles and that kind of that kind of those kind of incentives. But the growth funds, or as previously known as junior money, helps us find different things in our community, in our district that are important. And some of those things are like the last, like this, I got it right here. It's for SAS. I was able to get $20,000 for the Silver Regional Human Trafficking Conference, which is being held here, which is if you'll just talk to Bruce, he can give that, but it's going to be on April 23rd. And it's a really good thing, but it's something that helps our our local area, our region, and it brings attention to those much needed, not much needed attention. The other thing that I didn't mention for for law enforcement, I had a I sponsored a bill to support law enforcement when it comes to crimes against police officers to, you know, help support you guys on that. The last thing that I wanted to mention, even though it's not about the session, is I hear, and even though it's a city or municipal issue, I think it is important for us to understand because this is my town. I was born and raised here. I love our town and I and I know the Senator, I know I'm probably speaking for him, but I know that if you guys asked us to support you on the issues that you have in downtown, you know, the problems you guys are having, please reach out to us because we'd like to see how we can further help you. You know, Mandy and I took took some time off last year and we went up the coast and I said, you know, let's let's go see because of the homelessness and the drug and drugs and all that. I wanted to see how, I was traveling in California and I said, you know what, I want to see how how this is affecting California. And I stopped in Santa Monica and we stayed there and which was once a hotel that was a four or five-star hotel had been taken down to about a three-star hotel. And I didn't understand it because it was a beautiful place. And as I walked outside, I told Mandy, let's stroll down the beach and let's go down. And we started heading toward Venice, which is right next door. You would be amazed and it really it really shocked me on how each municipality managed their their area, how different it was. So Santa Monica had some problems. They have police officers and so forth there policing the area. And you could see, you know, people a little bit freer there, you know, doing exercises and stuff. But as you crossed into Venice, it was like the Twilight Zone. And it really, people living on the streets, people pitching tents, people selling things right there on the sidewalk. What I remember Venice being was just completely a totally different place. And people coming up to you when you're walking and trying to push and sell things to you and and being aggressive. I told Mandy, I wonder how it is if we go up to Beverly Hills and just take the drive-through there or Santa Barbara or Malibu, you don't see any of that. So I don't know what they're doing or what they have the funding to do or how their legislature or what their city's able to do to do. But I think it's important for us also to to have a conversation and invite us to do that to see what we could do to support you because I know that you have your limits on that. One other thing I wanted to address. Oh, so the Senator brought up our constitutional bills like those that affect the Second Amendment. I think it was just poorly written. It was very poorly written, but it was gas operated. That was the key word. When you put gas operated, that means you've got a BB gun, if you've got an airsoft gun, if you've got shotgun, if you've got any semi-automatics, all those would be affected. And so it's just a poorly written bill. So I think that's what had it fail. Altogether, Grant County received over $4 million by us coming together for a capital outlay in just Grant County. In the whole region, in the southwest region, by us working together, I believe we were closer to $18 million. So it's a wonderful thing to have a collaboration of efforts amongst our centers and representatives. I am very honored to be your representative. I appreciate and I know that you have my my number. If you don't, just ask me. I think everybody has it, but I'm always here to serve. I appreciate your time and God bless you and thank you for having me here.
Thank you, Representative Terrazas. Any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Gano?
I have a comment both for you and for Senator Ramos. I just want to tell you thank you. And the reason I say thank you is because we're spoiled and we don't, as a community, realize that. We just expect you to be doing your jobs. But I talked to municipal officials from other places and they don't even know their representative or their senator, much less do they have their phone number or can they go visit them when they go to Santa Fe? Some of them can't even name their representative and their senator. And it's a problem on both sides because there's a communication issue. But the point is, we don't have, they don't have representatives and senators who truly care about their community and who are a part of their community, and both of you are. And so I just want to tell you thank you for all that you do. I know that the session ended in March, but that doesn't mean that you've stopped since then. So I hope both of you can take some time with your families and enjoy what you like to do for a little while instead of always working so hard for us. Thank you.
Counselor, I think we are blessed that both Senator and I were born and raised here and that we know our communities really well and we love you guys very much and we're here to serve, okay? God bless you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Next is item nine, public hearings, and there are none. Next is unfinished business, and there is none. Next is 11, new business. New business item 11A is the approval slash disapproval of a public celebration permit application for Continental Divide Trail Days and Earth Day Celebration for April 19, 2025, with alcohol served from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at 1201 North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, one open space brewing, license number SBL 000112, post office box 2369, Silver City, New Mexico, 88062. Welcome. Could you introduce yourself and tell us a little bit of what you're doing?
Hey there. Red light's on, it's good, right? So we're Open Space Brewing and we are really excited to have Trail Days come our way again this year. And to kick it off, we're having a celebration at Golf Park on Saturday and we're going to be, I believe, serving from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM there on site. And we're going to be in the exact same space as that we were last year. And we also have a food vendor that has been working at our brewery for a while and he's planning on serving pizzas there as well that day. And it's supposed to be just a good time for hiker, to celebrate hikers coming through our community and and that's about it.
Thank you. Thank you for what you're doing. Any questions or comments from the council? Thank you, sir. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Snider?
I move to approve a public celebration permit application for Continental Divide Trail Days and Earth Day Celebration for April 19, 2025, with alcohol served from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at 1201 North Pope Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, Open Space Brewing, license SBL 000112, PO Box 2369, Silver City, New Mexico, 88062.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Counselor Gano?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second that motion as stated.
There was a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. Next is 11B, the approval slash disapproval of Resolution Number 2025-14, acceptance and approval of the fiscal year 2024 audit. Mr. Brown?
Mayor Galfo, with us today is Mike Stone, Stone McGee. He's the one that did the audit. Turn it over to him.
Well, first of all, let me say one thing. I'm not running for anything, so I'm not going to be, I'm not going to speak alone.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes.
I'm not running for anything, so I'm going to be brief. Okay. You have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements in this audit report, which indicate that's as high an opinion as we can give. That means we believe they are materially correct. You have an, and this year you were not required to have, I'm sorry, it's tax season and I'm tired. Where you weren't required to have a federal compliance audit